Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, October 10th. The time is 7:00 PM sharp. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Carmichael.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
And Chairman Pill.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Having a quorum, please all stand and join me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you sit down, I'd like you to remain standing for just a second. If you plan on giving testimony either for or against, I will need to swear you in tonight. So if you would raise your right hand and a simple acknowledgement, gentlemen, you'll need to join us also, a simple acknowledgement of "I do" at the end. Do you swear that your testimony tonight will be truthful, so help your God?
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. And I'd also ask you to silence all cell phones and pagers at this time. We already had a chance to discuss sign-in procedures, so if you've signed in, that's great. If not, please sign in when you approach the podium. We are on TV, so I'll ask, all discussion will take place from the podium area, so that our folks at home, cast of thousands of people who are watching this tonight, sitting on the edge of their seats, so that everyone can hear every word that you have. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 12th. May I have a motion, please?
Move to, um, except the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Carmichael. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill, I mean Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard, I mean Pill.
Yes, to all of that. The minutes are approved. Our first item is our open forum. Is there anyone who is here tonight and would wish to speak on any subject that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll continue on, and I'd like to go through a review of our public hearing procedures. For those of you presenting tonight, here's a brief recap of the procedures. I will introduce each item on the agenda in the order they're listed. I can make an exception to that, and we will do so tonight, and we will probably reverse the order. Please approach the speaking area and sign in if you haven't. We invite the presenting team or individual to present the agenda item explaining their item, addressing findings of fact and hardships as they are relevant and pertinent. There's an overhead projector for all diagrams, as we do have the TV audience. I will then go to staff to have them offer comments. After that, I will open the public hearing. Everyone who is here at attendance will have a chance to speak, and I will typically ask the applicant if there are any disagreements. I will ask the applicant to go ahead and address those. Each commissioner will offer comments and questions and question the applicant and/or staff. There'll be a discussion amongst the commissioners. We'll then close the public hearing. At the conclusion of the discussion, I'll call for a motion and a second on each agenda item. With the motion made and seconded, I will request final commissioner comments, and then we'll proceed to a vote, which may include findings of fact if they pertain to that particular voting item. And finally, I'll instruct the applicant on the next steps. Are there any questions on that? All right, thank you. Our first order of business tonight, I will entertain a motion to change the order on our agenda, moving planning and zoning item 18-018 first, and having planning and zoning item 18-017 go second. So a flip-flop of our two items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Carmichael, second by Commissioner Sharp. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Chairman Pill?
Yes. That motion carries. Therefore, we will begin our meeting tonight with new business, planning and zoning item 18-018. I task a bank and trust, 11267, Donald D. and Phyllis J. McLean regarding the property located at 138 North Cass Avenue in Westmont for the following. A, a special use permit request to operate a retail copy blueprinting shop in the B1 Limited Business District. Good evening, sir.
Thanks for having me. I'm Rick Bailey, and I worked at a blueprint company all my life. And we recently had a company in Claritin Hills, and it closed in August. So I've been looking around for another shop that I could open up. And we finally found the place on 138 North Cass, and I quickly hurried up and made the submittal, so I can get in there as fast as I can before all the customers are gone. So that's pretty much my spiel. We wanted to do a little modifications in the building, but with the time constraint, I need to get in there as quick as I can before, you know, customers start finding other places to go, which some of them already have. So I'm, that's why I'm trying to get in as soon as I can.
Okay. All right. Staff, do we have any comments this evening?
Yes, we provided a staff report. I'm going to just summarize the highlights. The applicant is seeking a special use permit for a print shop in the B1 district. The reason for that is because the use is over 1,000 square feet. If it was not, we would not need this hearing. The building consists of two businesses. The proposed print shop and an adjacent office. I think it's an insurance office, and there are apartment uses above it. The nature of the building, the mix of those uses, is one of the reasons, as I understand it, that the fire department has required the owner to install sprinklers. The fire department, as I understand it, has, as they have with other owners, have allowed that installation to occur over time. And the petitioner has 18 months in which to comply, or the owner, I guess in this This is an important use and business for the downtown, in part because this building, this particular unit, has sat vacant for some time. So that's, will generate new activity, new revenue, and all the above for the downtown area, bring in more people. This use is a more intensive use than the previous use, I was told. Now, I don't know what the previous use was, because it's been vacant, and I don't have the history here. But that was another reason to look at this use different than we might, another retail-oriented use. So we did take a look at the parking. We find that two spaces are required for the printing business. There are four spaces required, or for the existing office space, and four for the residential uses above, which equates to 10 spaces required for this site. This is a fortunate site in the downtown in that it has a gravel parking lot, and staff estimated that if we were to design it and pave it and stripe it, we could probably get in 20 cars. So they have more than adequate space to accommodate their business, which isn't, as you know, always the case in a down, old downtown, so. I also should have started by, for the record, indicating that we have published a notice in the paper regarding this hearing. It was published in the Westmont Suburban Life on September 26th. We've also served notice to adjoining property owners within 250 feet. Address list provided by the petitioner with, as per our tradition, mailing to all the adjacent properties. We took care of that. This was double-checked by internal staff. And so for the record, they have complied with the required notice provisions of our Other than that, I don't have much else.
Great.
Pretty much it.
Thank you. I appreciate the background on that. Does our village attorney have anything to add on this?
Just for the findings of fact, maybe if the petitioner could talk briefly about hours of operation and whether this use generates any adverse noise, odors, or other impacts on surrounding properties?
No, but I think my planning hours were from 7:30 in the morning to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And there would only be, well, right now, there would only be two equipments used, and they would be like HP machines. So there wouldn't be any ammonia fumes like the old blueprinting. This is all done with HP printers now, with the, just like toner cartridges like you use at home, small printers, only on a bigger scale.
Right.
So there wouldn't be any, any odors at all, which wouldn't affect the tenants upstairs. And the noise is very minimal.
Okay, great. All right, next, we will, we will go to the public hearing, and I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this subject, either for or against? Seeing no one present, we will go ahead and move on to commissioner comments, and I will begin with Commissioner Carmichael.
Good evening, sir. I have a couple of questions on the sprinkling. First, is there one apartment above?
No, there's, there's two.
There's two apartments, right. 138 and two above 140.
Yeah, but there's two.
On the sprinkling, the owner will stand the cost of that, and that's built into your lease?
Right.
Okay. And do you know as part of that, would, would 140 also be sprinkled as?
It would be the entire building.
If he's going to go to that expense, he would.
Right. He'd have to do the entire building with all state insurance, the two apartments, and then this empty space here.
And will your business have to be closed during the time when they're doing this? Do you know?
We're hoping not, but it's possible that when the time comes, they might have to, yeah, evacuate even the apartments for a day, or how long it would take. But, you know, I'm sure they're trying to work it out as quickly as possible.
Okay. I have no further questions. Mr. Bailey, you're welcome to the community.
Well, thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Since this is a special use, obviously it doesn't meet the requirements for a B1 district, which was mainly to produce retail or tax, retail tax. Is there, how much of your work is service and how much of it is revenue generating?
Well, probably nowadays, probably 90% is service. But we would be able to sell, you know, some papers to, you know, mocking customers and things like that. So there would be a small percentage of retail.
Okay. Good luck.
Yeah, I think I need it.
Commissioner Thomas?
I have questions about the sprinkling and how, what you understand from your conversations with your landlord or whatever, what kind of timeframe, since he's apparently been given this extension? Does everything have to be done, complete, installed at the end of that timeframe? Or can it begin at the 18 months? What kind of leeway or, or is the landlord being given?
Well, it is supposed to be done in 18 months. People can always ask for an additional extension, and it would be up to the fire chief at that point to consider that extension.
And how long of a duration? Like, okay, say, say, and since you opened your, your business up, and you get everything installed, all the printers and everything in, and you're up and running, and then he comes in, your landlord comes in and says, all right, in six weeks, we're going to start. How long do you have to shut down from start to finish?
That's a good question. I really don't know. I would just hope it would be maybe a day. Maybe they could do it over weekends when, you know, nobody's around. And, you know, my big concern too would be the apartments, you know? They have to, you know, move out for a week or whatever, how long it would take to do it. I don't know how long. I think the hardest part is to get the sprinkler system, you know, up to the building, and then they could always run the pipes, maybe when we're still in, in operation.
The type of use here would be less disrupted by turning off the water and working in the building than some other uses. I think the concern about the residents is more important in that sense.
Right, well, that's what I'm concerned about, the residents also. I don't know what type of machinery you have, temperature that they run, or whatever. Something kicked in with the fire department because they want sprinkles. They want a sprinkler system in there. And my question is, if it, if it's your understanding that it could, hopefully a couple days, you know, why can't they be done in a couple days before you install your stuff? Then, then you're all done, and there's no shutdown.
Yeah.
And then the people who are living upstairs, in my opinion, are, are more protected. And this is not some, a place that's on the fringe of the town. This is downtown.
Right. Well, I think there was a tenant that was going to move in, I don't know how many years ago, it was a barber shop, and they went through the same thing with the sprinklers, and it was going to take like six months before he could even move in. And, you know, you can't wait that long. So I know that they, they're looking to get a tenant in, and that's when they're planning on doing all the sprinklers.
The design and the permitting process isn't something that's done overnight either. I mean, you're going to have to sprinkler.
It's said on, on the paperwork here, they've been discussing this with the landlord for 13 years. 13 years. If, if you, if he had put a little money aside each month for the last 13 years, it'd be paid for.
Well, I, I agree.
And I certainly don't want to speak for the landlord, you know?
I guess what, what's triggering this is the use is changed, obviously, from what was there. The use is considered a little more intense. That's triggered the sprinkling requirements. If a similar business had moved into, in there to what had moved out and wasn't as intense as this use is, they wouldn't have had to sprinkler at all. So it's just, it's depend on the use. Obviously, there's some economics here. Obviously, the landlord would like the tenant to help him pay for those sprinklers over time. Obviously, there's economics as well.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Hello. Welcome to Westmont. I just have a couple of questions. So I believe you said that right now you only had two machines?
Right.
Okay. So I wanted to make sure, because what is unique about that building and it's, you know, kind of on our retail strip, is that it's a large glass storefront. So I want to make sure that we're not putting machines up against that glass, so that you would just see the back of machines from the street. So that's not the case, right?
No, that's not the case. Machines would go into the back where no one would see them. But in the windows, I want to put the advertisement and things.
Okay.
Just that people know that I'm there.
So is this a shop similar to other, is it like a retail print shop, where you walk in and say, I have a file that I would like printed, and you print it for me? Or I can self-serve?
No, it wouldn't be self-serve, but most of the customers would probably email the files.
Okay.
And there would be a few that would walk in with flash drives or CDs or whatever.
Okay.
And print from those, yeah.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. I, you know, I support it, and I wish you best of luck.
Thank you. I'm going to need it.
Commissioner Bartel?
When are you planning on moving in? I know you want to as soon as possible, but what is your timeline?
Very latest would be, if it's not by November 1st, then I'm going to forget the idea and do something else, because I waited long.
What would hold that up in the next two weeks? Do you have a lease? I mean, are you?
I.
You don't own it, so you're going to lease it?
Right.
So tell me about the process.
Well, we've gone, I talked to the realtor, and we've already discussed how the lease would work, that, and the owner of the building's in San Diego, and I guess he's pretty reasonable. I just talked to the real estate agent today, and at least I'm not really worried about. It's just a matter of when I can move in.
So you're waiting for the opportunity to move your machinery and things in?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Which would probably take at least, maybe about two weeks for the machines to be, you know, shipped away and, and brought into the shop.
Are they in a warehouse now, or where?
Yeah, they're probably in Kentucky.
In Kentucky?
It takes a couple of weeks.
And the landlord's in California.
Yeah.
I guess I echo Commissioner Thomas's concern about the level of confidence of the owner sprinkling this if it has been 13 years. I just want to get that out there, so hopefully he will. I just want you to be caught in the middle here. Everything's up and running, and no sprinklers, and you need to leave. And that's, that's not right, so that's, that's a concern.
Just for the plan commission's benefit, the village board has agreed to look at this petition tomorrow night. So they've agreed to a tentative fast-track, assuming that the plan commission approves tonight and move to their agenda tomorrow.
That's a good idea. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes, are you planning on any, upgrading any electrical facilities in the building in your, in your space?
Electrical, all the equipment is, doesn't need special electric. It'll all just plug right into the wall. I think maybe I might need one light, a different lighting fixture or something in the back. It depends on what we use the other space for. But right now, I'm just going to move in, and I think everything should be okay.
Okay. The reason why I ask is that relates to the objections to the, the non-sprinkler issue for a period of time. I know the board has discussed it before, and we have codes that we, we now upgrade to make this requirement, and it is a hardship, and we understand it's a hardship. It's not something that has anything to do with your business, or your practice, or how you operate, but it has everything to do with saving lives.
Right.
And the reason why I'm asking you the electrical question is that the wiring in the building is old. And maybe by helping to mitigate that, you know, with a newer service, or, I don't even know what it is, I didn't get in the building, so. But I do notice when you look at the pictures, you know, you've got air conditioning units sticking out of the windows upstairs, and that's kind of an eyesore reference to the, the discussion about how the building looks. And, and that's probably because there's no, the heating systems are old too, and so this kind of lends itself to an upgrade in a bigger way, and not anything to do with your, what your petition really is about. But I'm probably more in an objection phase here, because I've had an LODD in my family, which is a line of duty death, and 18 months is a long time, and it's putting our firefighters at risk. And the, the owner has known about it for a long time, could have taken care of it in a long time. But what I don't want to do is have a parade down Main Street for one of our firefighters. And that's my deal. And, you know, I'm not going to vote in favor just because of that. And I just, I applaud your business. I'll probably be one of your biggest users. I'm a, I have a business in town that uses big plotters, and I'll be there all the time. I'll have an account there. But when I, I have a problem with putting people at risk, and even for a short period of time, when the code's been known, and when you have contributing factors. We have an older building, we have older electrical service in there, we have newer equipment. We, we don't know, we may have, understand what our new equipment is, but don't understand what is in the building.
Right.
And with people upstairs, there's several contributing factors. It may not even be one of our firefighters, it might be a resident. And there's other things that the building needs to be upgraded, not just the sprinklers. So it's, I do welcome you. It, I would, you know, my heart tells me that, you know, you're a good person, you're going to be good for the village, you're going to be a good business downtown, but I just can't overcome the risk and putting people at risk on my vote. And I, I've done it before. I've, I've been a 6-1 vote before, and I don't mind doing it, but I just can't have that weigh heavily on my heart. I hope you understand that.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Most of my comments have already been covered by other commissioners, but I do want to make sure that it's loud and clear that we do have an 18-month window, and we're going to look towards enforcement for that. This landlord has, has had ample time. 13 years is long enough, and I think that our fire chief is going to be keeping a close eye on this. I just want you to make sure, as I think it was Commissioner Bartel said, that you've got your eyes wide open to this, and that you don't end up in the middle with something.
Right. It's just my bad luck that he didn't put the sprinklers.
And I do agree with our staff that it's not something that you could just do overnight. I mean, your portion may be two days of inconvenience, but the augering underneath the sidewalk and the tearing up of the street, we've watched these repeatedly up and down the strip there. And they usually end up being several weeks long, sometimes as long as four weeks. I just watched one on the lot just north of the jewel happening, and that one took four weeks. Now, it's broken up into outside and hurry up and wait, and there's, you know, there's, it's not like it's inconveniencing or you're shutting down for four weeks, but it does take several months to get the time slot, the permits, the layout, and the signed contracts, working backwards. And then it's a good month probably to do the job. So I am familiar with that. So as long as you're going in with that understood and recognize that I think the village is going to be tough on this because of how long it's dragged on. The other thing too, I would, I would also encourage you, Commissioner Lavoy hit on an area, you know, as you merge new equipment with old systems, to make sure that you do have, I mean, you say, oh, I got outlets right there. But, you know, it, it just depends, since no one's been in that building for years, we don't know how old some of that service is, how old the box is, how old some of the wiring is. So it would serve yourself best, because it's your headache if there's a problem that occurs, whether it's simply just shorting out your good piece of equipment, and I'm sure those are expensive pieces of equipment. So I think you want to make sure that that's up and functioning.
Right.
All right. I have no other questions at this time. Any other commissioners have any other questions? Village attorney?
One comment. I think the water main is on the same side of the street as this building, so that we not be augering under the roadway, and that's going to save the landlord and/or tenants some, some expense and, and time, which is good. I think there was testimony that there is no signed lease yet.
Right.
And just a question for staff. I don't know if, if Joe started this, or Joe Henner Fein started this or not, but the owner did not sign the petition for the special use, and we don't have a signed lease yet. So I'm curious how this got pushed through without either. It sounds like the owner's aware, once this tenant is aware, but normally we have the owner sign off on the application, and we require proof of a leasehold interest.
I did bring the owner's signature with, you know, the Republic.
Oh, you did?
I did have, I brought it with me tonight.
You, you guys?
I'd seen it, yeah.
Okay. Do you mind tendering that to Mr. Savoy?
Thank you.
And then we can have that as part of the record, which makes me more comfortable. Secondly, as soon as you get a lease, we should have some evidence of a lease in our, in the village records. I don't know that that will be in records by tomorrow night, when the village board is set to vote on this, but I think we should have some proof that you have a lease of some sort.
Okay.
So it sounds like the owner is aware. That was my main concern, is that the owner is aware of the sprinkler requirement and consents to special use. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any final comments from staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I forgot to ask one of my questions that was buried. That is that I didn't see anything here relating to signage on the building. here relating to signage on the building, and I wanted to know if the petitioner has any intent to add a sign on the outside of the building, and if you did, would it comply with the sign ordinance?
Outside the building, there is a plexiglass sign that's maybe two feet by three feet, and there's nothing in the plexiglass sign right now, but I did plan on putting our name on that. The sign's already out there. It is outside the building.
Okay. Is that sign that's there now compliant?
It's on the picture of the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, they'll just have to submit a sign permit. Staff can look at it. If it complies, it complies. If it doesn't, you'd have to either make a complying sign, or you'd have to ask for a separate variance and come back.
I just had a question in there that I wanted to ask, and I forgot it. So anyway, I just wanted to get that out there.
Okay. Yeah, you may or may not need a signed variance for that, so you'll need to work with the staff on signage to make sure that that's in compliance. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will go ahead, and I will call for a motion on planning and zoning item 18-018. A task of bank and trust regarding the property at 138 North Cass for A, a special use permit request to operate a retail copy blueprinting shop in the B1 Limited Business District. So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Bartel. Any discussion on the motion? And I would instruct all commissioners that voting for this, either yea or nay, will include the findings of fact, which were sent to everyone via email. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill?
Votes yes. So you have our recommendation. We are a recommending body. This will be forwarded on to the Village Board, and I understand from our staff comments that you'll be fast-tracked and on tomorrow night's agenda, and these gentlemen can tell you precisely that meeting starts at 6:00 PM tomorrow in the same room here, and they will have you probably attend that meeting, and that should complete the cycle.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All righty, continuing on now, we'll move backwards a step, if you will, hypothetically only, to old business, planning and zoning item 18-017, the Ryan Companies U.S. Inc., regarding the properties located at 700 Oakmont Lane in Westmont, Illinois for the following. A, a zoning code variance request to allow parking within the front yard setback in the O.R. Office Research District. B, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum number of wall signs permitted in the O.R. Office Research District. And C, site and landscaping plan approval. So the first thing I will do before we hear from our petitioners is I will ask for a motion. I will entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing, as this was already opened and continued from September. So anyone on a motion, please?
So, a second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Van Buren. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. All righty, so we have reopened this particular item, and I will now turn it over to our petitioner.
Great, thank you, staff, commissioners. My name is Kurt Pascoe. I am a developer with Ryan Companies, and I'm pleased to be before you this evening to present our plans for the redevelopment of the office building we are affectionately calling Oakmont Point. And bear with me as I get the PowerPoint to work here. Is it on your screens?
It is.
In front of you?
Yes.
In theory, it should be on the screens in front of you. There we go.
It is, and these screens reflect our home audience screens, so that would look good. There we go.
So, many of you are probably familiar with this property. It is an existing vacant office building that is Kitty Corner to the Papado's Restaurant. That is at the north end of town, just west of Highway 83. A little bit of history on Ryan Companies. We are a family-owned real estate development, general contracting, property management, and a Capital Markets firm that has been around for approximately 80 years. This year, we will do nearly $2 billion in work. That is development for our own projects, as well as third-party general contracting for other users. We have over a dozen offices coast-to-coast, including our local office, which is here in Naperville, right along 88. Tonight, the project before you, back to the rendering that we saw before, refers to the two office buildings on the north side of Oakmont Lane. You'll notice that this vision for the future also includes a concept building on the south side of Oakmont Lane, and we are hopeful that we'll be back before you at some date in the future for an additional phase of this redevelopment. But the discussion of that phasing is important as we get into some of the requests that are part of this site plan and landscaping approval. To go over a little bit of the architectural intent and design, I'm going to invite Roger Herma up to speak to the materiality and concept.
And just to make sure, I know you had the sheet back there. Has everyone has signed it?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I have. My name is Roger Herma. I'm a principal with Wright-Herma Architects in Chicago, and we've had a longstanding relationship with Ryan Companies spanning over the last 10 years plus. Have developed a number of properties with them, and I can attest to the quality and commitment of, you know, buildings that they build, as well as to the tenants that they place within those buildings. And being an operator as well, I think they see it all the way through, completely vertically-integrated company. With respect to the materials, I think the first thing to note is that, as you're familiar with, it's a big, hulking building that's out there now, a big, hulking, empty building. The good news is, it's going to be smaller, and it's going to be less dense than what's there now. And that's usually a positive thing that will, of course, generate, you know, less traffic than maybe what the original property had. And so, given that we are taking out two wings of the, two sections of the building, there are four sections of the building from east to west. We call them A, B, C, and D. B and D sections are being removed. The basement will still, lower level will still carry through. That'll be used for parking. So it's really a high quality. I think anytime you can get a development that has, you know, enclosed, covered indoor parking, that sort of connotes a little higher quality level than some other developments that are completely parked with ungrade parking. So I think, you know, from a massing perspective, it's broken down. We've got fewer pieces and parts than we do currently, and just, you know, would signify a less dense, you know, development. From the standpoint of the materials, I mean, you can see from this, we're really using a combination of precast concrete, glass, and metal, and those three materials are used in conjunction with one another. I think overall, when you look at this, you see a fairly high percentage of glass, which I think, you know, again, connotes a development that is of higher quality. Glass is more expensive than some other materials, as you might, you know, imagine, and I think it's used pretty well, you know, on the building. And so, you know, what we're doing is really developing the image that sort of orients you and really provides a very attractive gateway to, you know, that part of that, you know, office park. So that's sort of the, you know, we're using really a combination of, you know, punched window openings and ribboned glass. I think overall, from the inside, the glass line is going to be enhanced from what the current condition is, and that's really thanks to the technology of glass that we have available today that wasn't available during, in the 80s, when this was originally built. And so we're able to put more, you know, glass in a building, as well as, you know, consume less energy, which was a little bit counterintuitive, but that's what's happened, I think, with the glass technology over the last, you know, 30 years. We're really, you know, far into some very high-tech, you know, coatings and glass that still allowed a lot of visibility out, you know, a lot of daylight in, which is what office users are really looking for. Are there any, whoops, are there any questions with respect to the materials?
We'll probably hold on those, and let you guys continue.
Very good.
Thank you.
So one of the questions that we've received multiple times throughout this process is, that's great, that's a wonderful explanation of what you're doing, but I've driven by the site. That's a really big building. I've had dinner at Papado's. I don't understand what you're saying. I can't envision how you're going from the existing building that is there to the images that we see on the screen. So what we have done, if the computer cooperates with me, is created sliders that can show you the before and after of the And my apologies, hopefully this also works on the village computer.
Is this a PowerPoint function or something?
It is not a PowerPoint function.
Then I don't know.
It's up on this screen, and I do not know. Is the slider up on your screens as well, or is it still?
You still have the same.
We have what you see up there.
Same menu that you have.
Let's see.
You're seeing the slider on your screen. It's not showing.
I am seeing the slider on the laptop, but.
Is it an internet web-based application? Is that it?
It's just, it's the equivalent of a PDF document on the desktop. Well, it's all right. We can skip it and go on to the next one. But as Roger was explaining, the existing structure.
It flashed up there for a second.
It's just a picture.
It's just the gray picture.
We've got a picture up there.
Of the building.
The site plan.
The site plan, yeah.
So, as Roger had described, the building is actually three distinct office buildings today. So by removing two of them, we're left with structures that are more applicable to today's office market. We're proposing to gut the buildings, remove all of the skin, or the Belgian waffle, as I like to endear myself to it, and reskin it with all of the new materials and systems that Roger was talking about. So, moving on to our other requests, we had two variances that are in front of you this evening, the first of which is a signage variance. And it's a request for an additional wall sign that's shown in yellow on the screen. This sign is an additional sign because there are two buildings on the property, which is a unique scenario, and is most definitely needed, particularly because Oakmont Lane is a dead-end road. So all traffic, all visitors, all employees to this new facility will be coming from the east, and an east-facing sign on that building is the sole location that they can use to identify the future The second variance before you tonight is for a front yard parking setback in the area shown in yellow on your screen. The reason for this variance is to provide parking that is close to the building entrance on the west. Again, the existing building entrance is on the south, as all employees in the past used to park across Oakmont Lane in the south lot. By providing a new office entrance on the west, we want to ensure that employees can park as close to their building as possible. Additionally, given the limited traffic and local precedence on Oakmont Lane, the area before you is some examples further west down the street. Our proposal still provides approximately 40 feet from the curb of the parking lot to the curb of Oakmont Lane, and as you can see, further down the road, that gets reduced drastically, as little as 18 feet in some places. One of the comments in the staff report that we did want to discuss in further detail was regarding the land banking of parking, and staff can confirm, but I believe the request was to landbank the parking along the northern property line that is circled in yellow. The staff report did note that, including the underground parking in the garage, the northern property line, or the northern property, had approximately 650 stalls in and to itself, which results in an approximate four and a half per thousand parking ratio for the office buildings. We do understand that that is above what the village ordinance requires. However, also want to note that today's office users require much higher parking ratios. We're fielding requests as high as seven per thousand in parking. It's one of the reasons that makes this development more attractive to office users, and it's what makes it competitive against some of the other property that is in the market. So from a user perspective, it's important that we provide the stalls necessary to meet market demand. Additionally, staff raised concerns about the screening to the northern neighborhood, the Maze Lake senior community, but we wanted to ensure that staff and commissioners were aware that when we purchased the property in the winter of 2016, we did have discussions with Maze Lake regarding our proposal and regarding our proposed site plans. And in fact, in 2017, we granted Maze Lake a private landscaping easement, as shown here in yellow, along our northern property line. So at that time, they had reviewed our proposed landscaping plans and the proposed buffer along that area, and signed off and approved on those And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kurt. I appreciate that. I'm going to ask our staff to comment first, please.
Okay. So for the first order of business, as we've done before, for the record, a notice of this hearing and the variance requests has been published in the Westmont Suburban Life, and that was also on the same date of September 26th. Also, petitioner provided a map and a list of properties, all within 250 feet, to receive the notice of this hearing. That has been checked again, and that notice has been completed by the village staff. Have you found it?
I did find it.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
It was floating on a different screen entirely.
Ah.
So, back to the discussion about the constructability of this project, you can see that this is the existing building with the surface parking to the south and the three office buildings kind of stitched together by those glass adrams on the right. As we you can see the overlay in that the center building is removed, and the existing buildings have been reskinned. So that is the proposal that's before you. That's a great example right there. You can see that the building lines themselves are in the same place because we're retaining the post-tension concrete structure that is on the property, but we're reskining it with all new materials and systems. And likewise, for another view from the pond, and that's a shot walking along Pasco-Nelly Drive, looking at that three-building tiered wedding cake as you move up Oakmont Lane, and then as you scroll across, you can see that the building is retaining its structure, retaining those great views onto that feature pond that we have there, reutilizing that patio for some greater amenity space, but removing that center building to create a new Class A office development.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So, the first order of business, we've complied with all the, and the petitioner's complied with all the notice requirements. Much of my notes, I think, have already been covered by Kurt, so I'm not going to be redundant. I do want to highlight that the Economic Development Committee, or Commission, Committee, I had two meetings, both voicing support of this project in principle. Obviously, they didn't see all the details that you're privy to tonight, so they didn't weigh in on a lot of the issues regarding variances and landscape and all the other things that are on your table. Regarding variance history, I did. Regarding variance history, I did indicate in the report that we're going to try to do a little research to see what, if there was any history of any other variances, we only came across one other sign variance in the project, and we're not aware of any others at this time. The, our staff report, just to highlight, notes that, other than the variance requested, the project complies with all other zoning standards for FAR, building setbacks, height, as you see here, obviously there's no significant change in the buildings being proposed. The onset parking has been discussed, you have a surplus of 133 parking spaces over what, what is required, and regarding the impact of the additional parking on the landscape berm, because not knowing this agreement that has been worked out now almost a year ago, our initial concern was, well, what would that impact be on the adjacent ownership or use to the north? If it was another office use, probably a little less concerned, but obviously more concerned, and so, hearing that Maze Lake has now signed off on that is at least, I guess, some assurance to the community that they are at least comfortable, doesn't necessarily bind your hands, in my opinion, you can still voice your concerns over the amount of loss of landscape or what they're doing to replace the loss of landscape. There is in your packet, in our report, summarized the staff comments, other than planning, and on, these pages aren't numbered, which that'll be fixed eventually. Under staff comments, the engineering synopsis is, there's a lot of additional information required, nothing critical at this time regarding engineering approvals, information that's needed pertaining to easements for the future Village Water Tower that I understand is being negotiated on the high school site, is an open topic that Kurt, you may want to address, stormwater management are issues to be further investigated, other easement issues, existing water services, which I think that's been looked at, and I think that's essentially not an issue any longer, and something regarding impervious area calculations need to be updated. Basically, that combined with the landscape forestry reviews, the biggest issue seemed to be the replacement of heritage trees, which in the last review received from the consultant we use for landscape review, their sales seems to be some discrepancy over the number of replacement trees for the heritage, so I don't know if that's going to be an issue of physically, can we replace that many more trees on the site, or the Village has a provision, you may know about providing a field loop. So, that may have to be looked at, addition of Parkway Cheese, I believe, has been addressed now, green roof planting plan has been discussed, it's more of informational, I don't have any requirement that I'm aware of, so that's more for your information, and other various best management practices, requirements for the stormwater areas are things to be looked at, fire department has no other specific comments at this time. The way to characterize the staff comments, really nothing regarding engineering, landscape that would be reasons to withhold or deny this, most of these issues can be resolved at the time of permit application, so staff is comfortable, assuming you're comfortable with the proposal, with moving, moving forward. Ryan, in your packet, companies has been responsive, did response, did provide a response to all of the staff comments, and you can see in that response, everything has been satisfactorily addressed, or they say they will address it, so my understanding is that there's no more open issues with regard to their commitment to comply at this time, other than maybe looking at some of these landscape issues. John has provided the findings of fact, which you have. That's about it, so other than that, we, we support project moving forward, depending on your decision with regard to how you want to deal with the landscape buffer issue.
Thank you, Kurt. John, any comments?
There was one staff comment about potentially requiring a fence along the property boundary line with Maze Lake, and maybe that's no longer a staff recommendation if Maze Lake has an easement back there for landscaping, and they're satisfied, unless the Village feels like a fence should otherwise be installed there.
We think, we think we're satisfied, we're also, we would be concerned if the, if we mandated some type of fence, if that would agree with the easement that's been negotiated, so we'd have to go back to Maze Lake, possibly.
Maybe not one fence, maybe, I mean, you know, who knows, what's the better option?
And with the trees that are being preserved, would a fence result in additional tree loss, depending on where the fence line would be? So there's Lot 1, I believe, which is where these buildings are located, and then Lot 2 is across the street, under common ownership, correct?
Correct.
But two separate lots, subdivided lots, is that correct?
Correct.
And parking for this development will occur primarily on, on Lot 1, but also on Lot 2, which is improved just as a parking lot, correct?
Correct, potentially, yes.
Okay, so, the Village has a requirement typically that if parking is to occur off-site, there has to be an easement recorded for parking purposes, and typically we want the land under same ownership, which you have here, pretty easy to do, I don't know historically whether that was ever done, might be something, I'll look at it, you already exceed the parking on Lot 1 in and of itself, so this parking on Lot 2 isn't really necessary to meet parking counts, so I'm just checking through the ordinance to see if that easement is, is required, but if so, it's quite straightforward.
Yes, and I, I would state that the, there's no private property between the two parcels, the two parcels are only separated by the Oakmont Lane public right-of-way.
All right.
I just wanted to add, Mr. Chair, if I could, we did get a written statement from Noriel Noriego, couldn't be here tonight, he just basically said the stormwater management will be satisfied with the proposed modifications to the existing facility, they have provided their recommendation of approval with a notation that the preliminary stormwater management will be tweaked during the permit review.
Okay. Great, well, I will open up the public hearing, and I see we have a roomful of people, way anxious to get up here, if there's anyone who would like to speak either for or against this, and it looks like pretty much the seats are filled with your team, so we will move on to Commissioner comments, and I will begin with Commissioner Van Buren.
I had one great concern, and that was the lowering of the berm between your property and that of the Maze Lake, and since that has been satisfied, and I do, I would realize that's been satisfied for quite some time, and that was my main concern, but other than that, it appears as though all the questions and, and problems that had caused this to be delayed have been resolved satisfactorily with our engineering, and so I, I don't have any further problem with the...
Just one additional piece of information I forgot to provide, and Kurt did answer the question, so I was not able to determine from the plans I saw, the berm that's going to remain or to be provided within the 20-foot landscape easement, there will be a berm, number one, in addition to the landscaping, and Kurt, maybe you can describe more specifically, you indicated it was going to vary from two feet in height to seven feet in height, and I don't know if you can describe where and how that's going to be done within that 20 feet, or...
Correct, I'd be happy to pull up the grading plan, we have it right here if you want to dive into the details, but varies from two to seven feet simply because if you've driven around this property, you know that you're driving up and down on the backside of, on the north side of these office buildings, and the Maze Lake property is also not perfectly flat across those, so typically if you're imagining a berm between two parking lots and everything's flat, and you have a little hill in between, this varies simply because both properties are going up and down along that property line, so, Mike Mondes is here from Spaceco, they're our civil engineer of record, the design of that landscaping area is such that we get the maximum berm height at every point along that buffer.
We may have further questions on that, but thank you very much, and I will move on to Commissioner Thomas.
So, it looks like West, the, the fire department's happy, engineering is happy, staff is happy.
We can be happier, but we're happy.
And that's the way we like it. We need to be happy.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you, we're excited.
Commissioner Sharp.
Hello, I think, welcome to Westmont.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions about parking, that's my primary concern, the signage variance makes complete sense and well-needed, given the Kingery Highway there. My question on parking, though, is this idea that the zone, our zoning code is outdated, a claim I find interesting, and I was wondering if staff had done any prep work or research following up on that claim, that, you know, comparing it to other villages or cities?
It's a legitimate question, none that I'm aware of, and nothing that Joe had provided to me at the time that this report was being basically wrapped up. I will say, from the, you know, the literature that I read in tracking trends in office and retail world out there, it's not, the proposal doesn't strike me as being odd in that regard, meaning that office developments are looking for more parking because what's happening, and Kurt, you're more the expert, but what's happening generally is your, your space demands in an office building per employee are dropping, because you just don't have people come and go, I mean, you know, the whole rise of shared workspaces and office spaces, you just don't have the same kind of per square, square footage demands, so you basically get more employees in the same square footage, so you generate more parking, is my basic understanding of that. So, yeah, I, I, I would say that's generally consistent, I'm, I'm not surprised by, by this fact, although, we, we can leave it to there, I think there's a, that's something for us to look at in the future, you know, particularly because, you know, what's going on parallel with that is all, all the changes in travel demand and parking demand, and I've seen other proposals where, you know, developers are building parking structures, and they're building them in a way that they can convert them to office space and residential space in the future because they believe one day, because of car sharing and, you know, all the rise of all the other modes of transportation and, right, that maybe the parking demands will start going down. So, I don't know what the, you know, real truth is going to be in the future, but, you know, I, I do, I'm not, I think Kurt's position seems to be pretty consistent with other things I've seen around our region.
And to chime in on that, the parking count requirements in the Village's zoning ordinance have not been updated in decades, and we've heard from many residential developers that the parking count requirement is too high and doesn't...
Yeah, usually we don't, we're not in the situation where we have more parking than required.
Right, it might be a, a project that the Village can tackle in the upcoming years, but it has not been updated in a long time.
Okay, I mean, I guess my, my, the reason that that was interesting to me as, as a concern is that I, I tend to read through these variance requests kind of technically, like I'm, I always try to find reasons why this project is unique and, you know, needs a break from our zoning code, and in this situation, it's harder because you're actually providing more parking than what we require, so we were, basically the variance is based on, you know, your word and your experience, you know, as a developer, that I need this to make this site work, so that's the decision that I have to weigh, and I want to hear from other commissioners first, so. I did have other, one other question on the parking, can you describe kind of who is parking where, because I see all the handicap parking kind of justified to the west, but then I see that the far east building has immediate, medially adjacent parking, but with no handicapped spaces, and I was wondering if we could possibly provide some handicap parking to that building, rather than assuming a wheelchair would travel across the whole site to get to the workstation?
Yeah, certainly, we would want the handicap parking to be distributed evenly on a pro-rata basis between the buildings, there's also important to remember that beneath this middle section, this building and this green area, there is a basement underneath all of it that has parking in it, so, within the building plans themselves and the corner shell plans that the Village is reviewing or will be reviewing, there's handicap stalls not visible in this colored site plan because they're in the garage, they're covered, and those could be used to access what I'll call the pond building directly. But we'd expect that there would also be ADA stalls near the western building entrance, there might be a couple in the center, and distributed in a way to ensure that visitors and employees to both facilities have parking where they need it.
Okay, your architect may want to respond to this, but isn't there, by code, handicap parking to be provided within a certain distance of the entrance?
Yeah, I mean, what Kurt, just for us saying that, should...
Can you come up to the speaker, to the platform, please? Thank you.
As Kurt alluded, you know, having the parking distributed so that it's sort of in a pro-rata share, so there's basically three locations, the lower level, and then adjacent to each of the front doors, and yes, it does have to be proximate, you know, to the front doors, you know, right at the, at the door, the first, you know, stalls should be accessible.
We'll, we'll pick that up in the final review.
The shortest distance.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's not, that's not an issue.
The building berm, we'll pick that up.
Yep.
Overall, I think it's a great transformation, I mean, it's an incredible transformation, I think the architect's done a great job, it's, it looks like a Class A office building ready for use, so I congratulate you on that and wish you guys the best of luck.
Thanks.
Commissioner Bartel.
I agree, it's beautiful, it's going to be very nice, a couple of questions, what, what is your timeline, assuming approval?
I believe we're scheduled pending approvals tonight to be on the board meeting on the 25th, and we would hope that demolition would begin yet this month.
And what will you get before the, what will you get done before the winter sets in?
Well, the construction project of this nature, the demolition can continue through the winter, we can continue to put on the new skin throughout the winter, and hopeful that we would have tenants occupying the building as early as fall next year.
Oh, wow, that's, that's aggressive. What type of occupancy, is it retail as well as offices, and will those offices lease space?
No, it's, it's multi-tenant office, office users leasing space.
Okay.
There are amenities in the building that you typically see with a Class A office building, such as potentially a deli or fitness space, things of that nature, but not proposing any retail use at this time.
Not a significant tax revenue then for, for the Village?
From a retail sales perspective?
The only other question I had is, when you drive through Oakmont, there's, there's going to be presumably a lot more people, because this is, this is vacant and this soon will be filled, it seems a little locked up, and you could make a U-turn, have you thought about making a break there, or somehow managing the traffic flow if it's increased? And, and I think in terms of fire department or those kinds of things, emergency vehicles?
At the north lot, there is a curb cut at the, again, let me see if I can work my magic, at the west end of the property, there is a curb cut that goes across Oakmont Lane, and there's also access at the northeast corner of the property to Pasquenelli Drive.
Okay.
And those are the two curb cuts that exist today.
Okay.
And then the comment about traffic, you know, Roger was mentioning how a lot of this building's being taken down to make it more marketable, to address some of the inefficiencies and the problems it's had, being a very underutilized property for many years, and that also affords us the ability to hopefully do a future phase on the south block, but this building originally, and before it kind of fell into disrepair, was all office, including the entire basement, the basement level was not parking, it was not storage, it was office, there were no windows, but it was still all office space, so compared to the original design, the original development of these properties in the 70s and 80s, it's really not a drastic change from what was originally intended.
Okay, well, I think it's beautiful, congratulations.
Should be thanking Roger on that one.
Whomever. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, could you do me a favor and go over the pedestrian traffic here, it seems like we have like new dead-end walks, and we have existing walks that cross Oakmont, like right where it says on our site plan, Second Street frontage, there's actually a crossing, but it's kind of a crossing now that goes to nowhere, and it doesn't get picked up by the new walks.
Sure, right...
He's showing the Spaceco drawing.
The Spaceco drawing?
Yeah.
Bear with me, and I... All right, bear with me and I can...
I'm just looking at it from a pedestrian standpoint, of old geometry versus new geometry, and even the parking lot in the north, there's no walks to get to the building.
For the parking lot on the north, from a grading perspective, that lot is actually one story below where that parking lot between the two buildings is. So that surface lot is, if you drive back there today, that, that drive is lower, so the parking is at that level, you'll be one story below, so they'll be separated vertically, so parking in the northern parking lot, you would then have direct access into the stairways themselves that are at the north end of both the pond building and the larger building.
What I'm saying is a disconnect because there's nothing shown on the plan that would give anybody the indication of how the people actually get out of a car and get into the building, that's what I'm saying. If you go to the Spaceco drawing, I don't, I don't, I just don't see the connection here. I understand that there's a grade difference, but even on the north side and the south side, there's a sidewalk that, that comes out towards Oakmont from the main entrance of the existing building, the pond building, if you will, and it doesn't cross over Oakmont to pick up the pedestrian traffic out of the parking lot. Sort of the, the existing pedestrian path has to go navigate and wander around to get there kind of thing, and, you know, I'm even going to ask you that, that every other access point on the boulevard on Oakmont has a crossover. So from this dead-end parking, if you park in there and you want to pull out and you want to come back out to Pasquenelli, you actually have to go to the west and turn, make a U-turn and come back, so...
That, that's correct.
Every other access point on the whole boulevard has a full crossover, except for this one.
Mm-hmm.
So, what I'm saying is, you're going to, you're going to drive into the dead-end parking area, and if you want to drive out and come back out to Pasquenelli, you have to go all the way down and make a U-turn, and why can't we just open it up to a full access there? It just makes sense.
We can investigate that during permitting, that's a public road, so it would be subject to other village approvals.
I mean, what would the staff think? Talked about it, did I know?
It's, it's, it's our role, so we can do what we need to do. We can discuss it with the engineers.
Being, being that center lot, it's not, particularly since it doesn't go through, it's not a major concern as far as how much traffic. We'll be using that intermediate courtyard, it functions as much as a courtyard and open space as it does parking. So, through the design and talks with our tenants, they haven't been concerned about that access point to date.
Well, I'm thinking of delivery trucks, UPS, everybody else that's coming in and out of the building quickly, it doesn't actually work there. It's going to come into that main entrance and then they can't get out, they have to go up and turn around and come back. So it just makes sense to have the crossing, every other crossing is there, you know, for every other drive along Oakmont has the full crossover on the boulevard. So I would recommend exploring that to staff and to the developer, that's something that would probably make it a better solution, and also the pedestrian walkways, the way that you actually get from the parking lot to the south to the buildings, you see where our new walk ties in from the pond building, it just ties into the existing walk on the north side of Oakmont, and doesn't come all the way across. And, you know, a couple hundred feet down the block, you know, the, the next crossing does. So to, to the building to the west has that crossing to the parking lot, but it doesn't have it to the, the building to the east, and I'm just saying that, that it just kind of makes sense to explore the pedestrian traffic here, and if I worked there, I'd want to, I wouldn't want to walk all the way down the intersection and come across that existing walk, because then I got to walk back up to get to the main entrance to get in.
Which particular drawing are you looking at, just so we know?
Looking at the Spaceco drawing, this drawing.
Can you pull that up?
I can certainly try.
There a sheet number or something?
Seven of eighteen, Spaceco numbering.
O V S P.
Right?
Okay.
Overall site plan?
Yes.
There we go.
Is that the first? Well, this shows existing, down at the bottom right, seven of eighteen of them.
I think you're back, you need to go back one.
You're good, seven of eighteen.
Keep going. That, oh, no, that's not in either one, anyway, it's seven of eighteen. So the, the crosswalks just don't line up in a number of locations of getting people to the existing crosswalk on the boulevard to the new walk that's being proposed as we split the building. By the way, it's a great project, I'm just trying to make it better, that's...
Yeah, no, I think, I think this is great input, certainly it looks like these guys are writing it down, and we still have to go through the permitting process, the final permit.
Yeah, it just makes sense to maybe take a look at the pedestrian, how this is all going to flow together, and, and I won't beat a dead horse, I'll just leave it to the pros at this thing to take a look at that. I do have a, a dead-end space, kind of just, we just go over the, the quickie jiffy stuff like garbage, where's garbage, is it down below, is it above?
Yes, it's down below, so this...
It's going to stay there?
The northwestern corner of the building, it's where you're, again, one story below, you're one story below Oakmont Lane, and you're on the backside of the building, that's where service is today, it's where we're proposing to keep service.
Okay, deliveries are going to be...
That's where deliveries, trash, it's also your garage entry and exit for the below-grade parking, that's all occurring at the northwest corner of the building.
Okay, and as we split these buildings, it's going to stay that way, or?
It, it stays that way because the, the below-grade parking is functionally across the entire development. So it's, it's all one space under there, so even if you're driving by an Oakmont Lane and you'll see a courtyard between the two buildings, and you'll see some visitor parking, that's really the top of a parking garage, and you have parking hidden below it, so it does a really good job of providing an amenity, providing parking closer to the building, while also limiting some of that blacktop sprawl that you see in a lot of suburban office parks.
So go back in here and pull back, huh? Okay. Go back to the pedestrian traffic, like, look at that dead-end parking between the two buildings now, if you're parked on the extreme north end of that, you have to walk through the parking lot to get to the sidewalk, the sidewalk should extend all the way to the end, and also give yourself enough room for turnaround to pull back out. So there's just a little work needs to get done on the inside corridor there with the new parking, maybe extended a little bit for fire, I, it seems to be a pretty tight radius, did you do a auto turn on this, this all works?
Yeah, around the property we have, not in the center courtyard, I'm not sure that's going to be required.
Yeah, I noticed on the letter that all parking, according to the, I know I read it here somewhere like twice, that the fire department was saying that that has, has to be eighty thousand pound load, right, right, on all parking?
Believe it's for all fire lanes, but I'd look to staff to confirm that comment, I just don't have the response letter by me.
Anyway, I don't want to spend the time, oh, maybe here, yeah, all emergency access road and parking lots shall be able to support a minimum of eighty thousand pounds. Does that mean that that center corridor is going to be designed to meet that capacity?
I don't know, we have not submitted for a building permit yet at this time.
But that's going to be the criteria?
I think that'd be up to the, the fire chief and as part of his review.
Well, the reason why I asked that question is without it, you can't get a fire truck even close to the building.
Yeah, they, they won't permit this if they can't support a fire truck.
Yeah, I mean, you know what I'm saying, that the corridor in the middle has to be the eighty thousand pounds.
I do, but that's why it's in their, that's why it's in their comments, and why it will have to be addressed, or you won't get permits.
Okay, and the only other comment that I have is, is that long row of parking at the bank area really could lend itself to a couple islands with a couple of trees. It's a long, long way with just a row of parking, and it's also like a car dealership. You know, so it, but overall, it's a good project, I congratulate you, it's really nice, it's going to be a, a really different look, I go up that road all the time, it's going to be really nice, but any consideration about connecting the two buildings with maybe a walkway, or, you know, if you have a common tenant that might want space?
Potentially, if there was a single tenant taking all of that space, but right now, that's not what we're forecasting, and again, with that garage space, there would be interconnectivity if there were a single user that could walk between both buildings without going outside.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good otherwise, thank you.
Thank you. All right, a couple of things, um...
How about the... Yes, I get my shot.
Oh.
It's out of practice.
I forgot the best. Commissioner Carmichael.
I'm waiting for this one.
The bulldog, he's ready.
Does the Ryan Companies operate these properties that they, that they develop, or do you sell them?
From a property management standpoint?
You, you, yes, you manage.
It really depends, it depends on the project, it depends on the tenant, and frankly, other decisions that our leadership makes coast to coast about which properties we maintain ownership of and which we don't. So for this one...
So your intention is...
Don't know today, without it being fully leased up.
That's fair. Is your agreement with the Maze Lake been submitted as part of the application?
Yes.
Okay, I did, and, yeah, I think your, your variance request for the signage and for the, the setback is, is good. I'm having, it's hard for me to visualize this parking on the, on the north side of the property, given that relatively high berm that's there now, what's that going to... I mean, the, the cars aren't going to park uphill, so the, the cars on the north side of that drive will be parking level, so you're going to lower that berm?
That's correct, yep, we're essentially scraping out that berm in that area.
And then rebuilding the berm?
Correct, the berm between, if you've driven the parking drive back there, the berm between that drive and the building is what we are scraping out. So that dirt has to be removed to create a flat parking lot, and then between our property and Maze Lake, we're just building the parking as shown and then going up as high as possible between our curb line and their property line, so we can get up and back down.
Okay, well, this is very exciting, and I support it.
Thanks.
Now...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Carmichael. All right, um, most of the questions that I had have been asked already, but is there agreement on the water tower easement?
No, we had some preliminary meetings with village staff about the village's plans and potential locations for a water tower, to my knowledge, I don't know if, if a location has been chosen with the village in general, we seemed open to the idea of working with the village, but staff didn't know if the village was going to be looking for access or construction access, or what that would look like, so we're just here, we still have future phases of development left, and we're happy to talk once there's some more defined plans for that project.
Okay.
For the water tower project.
You know, I, I was at the economic development for both of your presentations, which were very well done, but as a good salesperson, you shined the light on all the good positives, and we stayed away from any potential negatives. It was interesting, the comment that we had, that this is less dense, therefore positive. Yes, that's true, but less dense, but requiring more parking, and, you know, when you, when you drive by this property for the first time, you're attracted to its pastoral setting and the water element, and yes, the building is old and outdated, it's somewhat grown and there's vines and things like that, but it, it still has a certain element to it. We're going to remove all of that, that which is somewhat attractive to us, yes, the buildings are going to look better, but the property's going to be stripped, hundreds of trees are going to be removed, and most of them can't be replaced because we're going to take paradise to put up a parking lot, to paraphrase. So it's, uh, it, it's sort of interesting that, you know, we have a less dense situation, which by your comment, your team's comment is a more positive, but yet we're, we're stripping the very pastoral and, and the heritage trees and the trees, and taking that away, and most of that is self-induced because there's plenty of parking, it's just that you want to put a third building across the street. So with that parking, you'd have more parking than you're going to be adding and taking away the south lot, so it's, uh, it's, it's really an interesting balance and dichotomy because, you know, we didn't hear any of that in our first two economic development presentations, that was new to me when I saw this. I was the source of several of the staff questions to you, because I was surprised to see that much property being taken away in the back. I have no problem with the signage easements, I have no problem with the setback easements on Oakmont Lane, and it's really not a question that you're asking for any variances in the back, and you've apparently negotiated this, but I, I just ask you, and, and I, I guess what I'm sort of hanging my hat on is, I've reviewed the Ryan website a couple of times, and I'm impressed with what I see there. Once again, you're certainly not going to show us failures, and you're not going to show us things that don't, don't work out well, and I'm sure there's a few of those in the eighty-year history, but, and it's just like at economic development, we didn't get wind really, or we didn't have this part of the presentation given to us. So when I look at this long strip, that's a long strip back there, I, I don't, I didn't count the number of spots, but that's a long strip of parking with no break, we're losing well over sixty percent of that bermed area, and more in certain areas, some areas it's not as much. So does it become a flat line twenty feet? Is it, because I've had trouble with all these, everything you gave us in the packet, which was very thorough, but I couldn't find that exact distance. So is that berm from the curb of the parking to the property line of, for Maze Lake, is that twenty feet?
Yes.
And then Maze Lake has a small amount on the other side, so it's going to be somewhere in the twenty to thirty foot range is going to be the total space dividing the two properties, have I summarized that properly?
Between their curb line or building or whatever might be on their property?
Yeah, they've got road back there and parking lots.
Yeah, it varies, and some, you know, you can see it, it's, it's a little bit hard to see right here, you can see their curb is actually pretty close to the property line, they, there's pretty minimal setback on their side right there, and then as you move further east, there's nothing shown in that first ten, twenty feet, so the, the distance between our curb and whatever hard escape they have on their property is likely larger.
Mm-hmm, because right now, there's really nice screening between the two properties, and so basically, to do this project, you're going to take out, it looks like you're going to take out a hundred percent of everything on that north end, basically, you're going to take the berm all the way down, I would assume, and then just rebuild it at some type of a slope ratio that, that meets the needs, so it's going to completely go, so until you replant, there'll be nothing there, it'll be wide open, am I correct?
Until trees are fully planted? Yes, I think in some areas, and Keith could speak to it, but where trees can be saved, they are...
Maybe in that northwest corner, it's going to stay a little bit, and maybe a little bit at the entrance on the northeast corner, but it looks like the rest of it goes out. Is there any consideration or thought to any type of a fencing along there, or is that something you're not interested in doing or maintaining or installing?
It didn't come up with our discussions, I think staff said it clearly, if you put in a fence, we'll probably end up trading that off for trees, and a lot of places you put in fences where there's not green space for trees, you try to use that for screening instead, so it wouldn't surprise me if you'd have to lose additional proposed trees in order to do a fence, and I'm not sure we have an opinion, but certainly Maze Lake was approving up the landscape plan put forth. And then your comment about the parking and the comment about other failed developments, certainly the last thing we want this to be is failed development, we think this is a great opportunity, there's certainly been shortcomings with this building, and if there was a three hundred, four hundred thousand square foot corporate user that wanted to take the whole building and put everyone across the street and park, we'd love to build that for them, but that's not the market, and that's not how today's Class A corporate users function, in, in part... Class A corporate users function, in particular, that parking on the north is needed to make the pond building, which is really beautiful and is right on that water, it's really cool, if you've been in it, the walls go right down into the pond itself, but there's absolutely no parking anywhere near it, so if you were a employee of this building in the past and that was your office, you were parking either on the south lot or the west lot and walking several hundred feet, quarter of a mile to your office down to overlook the pond.
Or you might have walked through the building, right?
Or through the building, correct, but we're, but that building is, you know, we're, it's five, six hundred feet, so I'm sorry, quarter of a tenth of a mile, but for it to be a viable project, for office users to want to lease this space versus other space available in the market, they're not going to want all of their parking to be across the street, they're going to need some amount, if not a majority, of their employee parking to be as close to their building as possible, so that's, that's simply a challenge of this site and this redevelopment.
And I understand that, and my hope is also that those same A-class tenants are going to want to see a nicely landscaped property, so that when it's done, we have good landscaping across the board on the property, certainly not going to duplicate the density, but we certainly could make it look nicer, because some of it's overgrown and there's garbage in there too, I understand that, but certainly, it is green space that we're losing, and we do have an abutment there of two different zoning issues, so we have residential with office research, and it's nice to maintain some type of, some type of a division between those, so I'm hoping that the berm could be as maximized as possible and that it could be planted as densely as possible also, those would be two of the things I'm looking forward to seeing.
Keith, I think you can comment, that's planted about as densely as possible.
It is, any denser in the plant material would, you know, would have-
So, maybe you could come up and, because my next question has to do with a landscape and this may be yours, can you talk to us a little bit about this wetland area, that's a new change and one I was not, I'm sorry, maybe I have the wrong person, I'm sorry, I wasn't familiar with that until I read the plans for the first time on Friday.
Good evening, my name is Michael Mondas, I'm with Spaceco Incorporated, we're the civil engineers for the project, one of the requirements by the county stormwater ordinance that you guys enforce is the BNP volume, or the first insurance and a half runoff off of impervious areas has to be run through a best management practice, there's a lot of different ways to do that, village staff has directed us that some of the more other methods that have been used are used, permeable pavers and other things like that are not acceptable, and really, we were left with an option of basically filling in the pond to create a wetland bottom basin in a section of the basin, so that's what the plans represent is the corner of the basin actually being filled in and planted with emergent plants to look more like a wetland, if you will.
And then that will sort of filter water before it enters into the main body?
Yeah.
Not quite that.
Not quite, but, I mean, the water, the water in the pond is the water in the pond, it's all the same water, it's just that the water's going to discharge into this, into this native area where the plants have some ability to absorb some of the, you know, the nutrients or whatnot from the suspended solids that are in the runoff before it gets into the larger pond itself.
And then if and when we see a reappearance for development of lot number two, is that lot then also use that pond for its, its water runoff?
Correct, the south lot does drain into the, into the same, into the same pond, there is some areas down there that we've identified as potentially you could maybe create something on the south lot instead of doing that same function in the pond itself, but, you know, right now, there's no development plans for that south lot, so we're not kind of, we're going to, if you will, kick the can until something happens down there.
Sure.
But it is possible that when that south lot develops, that the pond might need to be further modified.
Understood, thank you, Mike. All right, Kurt, one final question, I think you touched on it already, did you mention that there is the possibility that one or, one of the amenities in either one or both of these might be some type of a restaurant or a deli or something like that?
Yeah, it's possible, you know, it's not uncommon for Class A office buildings to have delis in them, so they're not, they're not sit-down restaurants, it's not where you go and have a waiter and, you know, you get a turkey leg or something like that, but it's, I think we've all been to larger office buildings where there's the deli, you can get salad, you can get a turkey sandwich, things of that.
There's one on either side of that, of your development right now.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So, there are two right over there.
So, something similar to that.
Yes.
Because I was going to comment on that also, our zoning ordinance isn't real clear as to what accessory uses besides office uses or research uses are allowed, it says accessory uses including but not limited to, but it doesn't mention, you know, the typical snacks shop, you oftentimes see a deli, newspaper stand, things like that, that are traditional accessory uses to an office building, something for staff to keep in mind and more importantly for you to keep in mind when you're thinking about potential accessory users, check with staff, make sure it's something that they can interpret as truly accessory, accessory to an office use.
Certainly.
Sorry.
Oh, no, no problem, thank you, thanks for your answer too. All right, that's all the questions that I have, any other comments from staff or commissioners?
Just, I commented earlier on the parking easement and I, since then, I checked the code, it seems to be that that parking easement, when you park off-site from your primary use, is only required when that off-site parking is needed to meet your minimum parking counts, the ordinance isn't exactly clear, but it seems to be the most logical interpretation of why that's, why that's there, so I don't see a need for an easement to be recorded.
Okay, great.
And also, you mentioned on the location of the water tower, the proposed water tower, that's specific, as I understand it, on where those old tennis courts are located on the school property, which is right at the southwest corner of lot two, so that's right, right along the body.
Yeah, when we met with staff previously, there were multiple sites under consideration, there were unanswered questions about construction access to that property as well as permanent access to the property, how people were going to get there, what points in time with the school, and we just said, you know what, that's fine, we own this property, there's future development on the south lot, we're around when the village's plans are a little more solidified, give us a call.
All righty, I will close the public hearing, thank everybody who contributed tonight, commissioners, any final discussion or comments?
Yeah, I think I, I think I resonate a lot with what you brought up about the distance between parking islands on the north side, it is, it is a long distance, and as I heard your testimony about how important that parking is for that east building, I think it's appropriate for us to kind of, you know, add a qualification on any approvals that there would be an intermediate parking island, just to break that up, so I would be interested in hearing other commissioners' thoughts on that.
I would agree, it's a long run, you know, it's something that lends itself to the grading there, the plant material, it would give, would give a little more of an option.
Yeah.
When you look at the thing from east to west, you know, no matter what you do on the berm with plant material or grade, to really break it up and to do well with the landscaping there, it really lends itself to some islands along, and we're over parked, so, you know, it makes sense to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a loss of maybe two.
Yeah, I think we can certainly add a couple parking islands in there, that makes sense.
Great. John, how would we handle that as a recommendation, would you prefer it as a separate motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 18-017, the Ryan Companies U.S. Inc., regarding the properties at 700 Oakmont Lane in Westmont for the following, A, a zoning code variance request to allow parking within the front yard setback in the OR Office Research District. So moved.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Bartel, comments or questions on the motion? Before we do the roll call, I would once again instruct everyone that your yes or no vote on this will include the findings of fact for item A, roll call please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion for item B, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum number of wall signs permitted in the OR Office Research District. So moved.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Carmichael, second by Commissioner Van Buren, and once again, as before, this will include our findings of fact for this, roll call please.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes, I will entertain a motion for item C, a site and landscaping plan approval. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Thomas, comments or discussion on the motion, hearing non, roll call please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion for item D, a request that the Ryan Companies work with our staff and look at the north parking stretch and come up with a plan to install perhaps one to three types of landscape islands in there to break that, provide a little bit of a buffer. So moved.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Bartel, any comment or discussion? Hearing non, roll call please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes.
All righty, you have our recommendation, and as I understand from staff, this will go on a Thursday night, most likely October 25th, before the village board for their hearing in that, and it's a great project, I welcome you guys to Westmont, and I hope that we can really have the landscaping shine and keep this a focal point, it's an area that everybody who comes into Westmont, you know, you've seen the numbers at Papado, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of cars there on a daily basis, and many of them are from out of Westmont, so everybody looks at that spot, and I know the building is going to really shine, it's got a water effect, and to have the proper landscaping and things like that are just going to make it that much better, and they'll be that much more in for the rent for the Ryan Companies too.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, we appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, we have anything else from staff, any comments or announcements to make?
I think I made announcement to a few of you before the meeting started, just a heads up on what's coming in November, the only thing I have on the agenda is, will be, the Public Works facility on Fairview will be up for, they're expanding and there are several variances that they'll need to do what they want to do.
And do you have the date of that one by any chance?
What, the meeting day?
November, yeah.
I think it's the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Oh, yeah, that's right, because it's the seventh to the fourteenth, yep, okay, great, so our next meeting then will be at seven o'clock on Wednesday, November 14th, and is there any other business that come before the commission, hearing non, I'll entertain a motion for chairman.
So who? Second?
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Lavoy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this meeting is adjourned, thanks everybody.
You going to be here for that meeting?
I plan on being here for the rest of the meetings this year, yes, sir.